Good evening, everyone. I call the September 9th, 2019 work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we'll start off the meeting. I'll ask my colleagues to stand as Councilman Battle leads us in invocation, and then I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
Father, please bless our city. Father, please give us the knowledge to come up with the ideals and the implementation that will make our city a better city. Make us know that the greatest resource we have is the human resource, and we must serve them. Although other things are needed, the greatest resource to attract anything is to providing wonderful ways of life and a high quality of living for the citizens. Please, Lord, know that we love you, and above all, bless everybody on our planet. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask my colleagues on council to indicate their presence by hitting the yes button. This will be our electronic roll call. And, Madam City Clerk, we have 100 percent attendance.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please silence your telephone, either by turning off the ringer or turning it off, please. This is a public hearing that City Council established at its work session two weeks ago in August. It's a work session on the location of a proposed new City Hall and Public Safety Building. Hopefully, as everybody in this room knows, the city received an unsolicited proposal last year from a real estate development firm, Ahmata Hoffler, to build a new City Hall at the location of the County Street Garage and a new Public Safety Building on Willet Drive. The city has a memorandum of understanding only with the company, with Ahmata Hoffler. The city does not have a development agreement. A development agreement is that document that's necessary that describes the total scope of the project, the size of the project, the cost of the project, what will be built, how many parking spaces, what will the parking spaces look like, all the details that one would expect in a project of this magnitude, of this nature. That we do not have, and purposely, we don't have it yet. We haven't done the negotiations to get to that point. Because public buildings, like a City Hall or courthouse typically last for a half a century, council felt that it would be really important to get public input on the location that's being considered or proposed for City Hall. Again, the unsolicited proposal proposes to build a new City Hall where the County Street Parking Garage is located. That's a 660-odd space parking garage that is quite old. It has served the city well and has reached the end of its life. So regardless what happens here with this project, that garage has to be replaced in some fashion. The Public Safety, primarily the Police Department, was located in the building next door. That building is old and is experiencing major utility issues, and the question would be whether or not to renovate that building or build a new Public Safety Building. The preliminary analysis says it's more cost-effective to build a new Public Safety Building. So, we want to hear from you on the location of the proposed City Hall. And I want you to, and there'll be a presentation on the location, but visualize High Street and the Children's Museum and the walkway that goes south, what used to be Middle Street. And that walkway ends at the parking garage. And the concept would be for that parking garage to come down, and you would extend that walkway to County Street. And then on either side of that walkway would be two parcels. One's concept is to build the City Hall on one parcel and the parking garage on the other parcel separated by the walkway. And that parking garage, again, would not only serve City Hall, but because it serves downtown, it would serve downtown in addition. So it's got to be sized correctly to meet both the needs of people coming to City Hall but also going to restaurants up and down High Street. I've already, and I'm sure my colleagues have gotten complaints about the parking on High Street now as it relates to people wanting to shop and dine on High Street. The proposed location for the Public Safety Building is Willet Drive. I want you to visualize where Willet Hall is and the location of the old Woodrow Wilson High School. It would be in that area, on that site, so that if you're facing Willet Hall, and the council made the decision two years ago that Willet Hall needs to be replaced with a venue that's more modern and better located, the Public Safety Building would be to the left of where Willet Hall stands now. And these are generalities. Again, we do not have a deal, so we can't discuss something that we don't have, so we want your comments to be limited to the location of these two buildings. For example, I personally would like to know which is the better option? Build the parking garage separate from City Hall? Or another option is put the parking garage integrated into the City Hall building, leaving the other parcel as either a park or for some type of future development? So, this is a public hearing. Well, you do not have to have signed up to speak at this public hearing. Each person that desires to speak, please come to the lectern and give your name and address. We have a record of that. Please limit your comments to the location. And again, these are general descriptions that I have given. There'll be no personal attacks. There's no reason to attack anybody because no one's done anything. This is part of the process of trying to determine what's best for the community as it relates to the location for these much-needed facilities. This building is old, too, and if you've ridden up on the elevator, it sounds like you're riding bumper cars. Dr. Patton, you might want to check out Elevator 1. It hit at least two floors earlier today. With that, Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Dr. Patton, I see that you have a PowerPoint that will probably do far more justice to help and explain the locations than I did orally. Do you have a presentation?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, tonight, Mr. Robert Moore, Director of Economic Development, will provide background information and an update regarding the Public Private Education and Infrastructure Act, better known as the PPEA, received from Ahmata Hoffler for the proposed City Hall and Police and Fire Public Safety Building. This presentation was presented to City Council during the public work session on Monday, August 26, 2019. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, good evening. As Dr. Patton stated, tonight, we will discuss the, what has been set forth so far between city staff and the developer with regards to where we are in the PPEA process. That includes the location of City Hall and, or the proposed location for City Hall and a Public Safety Building. First, let's do a brief history of the PPEA process as it's been so far. Back in February of 2018, the City Council at its retreat voted to move forward with the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Plan. That plan called for us to take a hard look and a real focus on reinvigorating downtown, connecting the waterfront to downtown, and connecting our citizenry to the waterfront. Part of that also included looking at the relocation, or potential relocation, of public use buildings, including City Hall and 801 Water Street. Subsequently, in May of 2018, Dr. Patton did receive an unsolicited proposal from Ahmata Hoffler, as you spoke of earlier. That initial proposal included a 100,000-square-foot facility that would include a combined City Hall and Public Safety Building, thus taking 801 Water and 801 Crawford Street, combining them into one location, and that would also include a brand-new 670-space parking garage. From May of 2018 to about November of 2018, Dr. Patton did receive and go through the PPEA process with regards to the necessary procurement under that law. And in November of 2018, the City Council did approve, the city manager signing a memorandum of understanding with Ahmata Hoffler. And at that time, city staff was assigned to review the proposals that were received and then report back with the findings. So from about November 2018 till May of 2019, or really about March of 2019, city staff did review and complete some of the assessments necessary to go through with this process. Part of that was a needs assessment for both City Hall and the Public Safety Building, as well as the design for the parking garage, to really understand what is needed for a new City Hall or will be needed for a new Public Safety Building. From about, again, March of 2019 up until August of 2019, staff has been meeting biweekly with the developers to include Ahmata Hoffler, Clark Nixon, as well as Kelly Horn, to see again what we can get to from a standpoint of design on a building, from an opportunity, just to understand what those needs are, what the location could be, and then ultimately, at some point, what the cost could be. And that brings us to tonight, the public engagement process in sitting down and meeting with the public and having and hearing their options and their kind of desires for the options in place. When we talk about City Hall, again, as you spoke about mayor, City Hall, we would look to relocate 801 Crawford Street and 801 Waters to a new facility, which at this point is proposed to be at the current County Street Garage location. That would move 801 Crawford, which is primarily City Hall, to this location; 801 Waters, which was the Public Safety Building, that would be located, or is proposed to be located in a different location, again, out of Willet Drive. But from a City Hall standpoint, the development plan really comes out to two concepts, a concept A and B. Option A, or Concept A, would have a separate City Hall building from a parking garage. The City Hall building would be approximately four stories, about 68,000 square feet, with a separate 700-space parking garage. As you noted earlier, mayor, the High Street or Middle Street pedestrian access would be extended to run through and punch through all the way to County Street. This would give us a defined plaza area in front of City Hall, again, as well as pedestrian-only access between City Hall and the new parking garage. Option B, or Concept B, similar concept, but instead it would stack City Hall on top of the garage. Instead of it being a four-story building, it would be a three-story building, again, on top of the garage, still about 68,000 square feet. What that would do is leave potentially another site for future development, but when you look at those concepts, there's some pluses and minuses to those concepts. Certainly with Option A, you have separate buildings. City Hall would be a prominent fixture on County Street. Option B would cost more from the development, from the standpoint of putting the development on top of a parking garage. It would also need for us to, at some point, deal with or address the parking for any future development that would be there, meaning that we wouldn't know exactly what development that would be or the type of development. What we would have to do is make sure we address in some way the parking somewhere along the future. Based off of these two options, staff's recommendation in consultation with the developer would be site plan or site layout, Option A, which would be separate City Hall, separate parking garage. Again, four stories, four-story office building with a parking garage of about 700 spaces. Conceptually, it could look like this. Parking garage, again, you can see the pedestrian access there. You can also see kind of a skywalk from the second level or the upper levels of the parking garage over to City Hall. We have conceptual department layouts, really just to kind of see how it would all space plan into this new facility. No real definitive workspace, again, because this is all conceptual. One thing that we all did agree on is that council chambers and the council conference room, instead of being on the top floor, would be on the first floor, from the ease of access for the public, for the press, and so forth. Also, public uses from a standpoint of the treasurer, from the commissioner of revenue, those items we suggest would be on the first floor as well. All the other floors have not been planned but have been spaced out from a standpoint of the needs of our current facilities would be met. We did also make the recommendation, however, that the city manager's office, the mayor's office, council conference rooms, from a personal standpoint, would still be on the top floor. We also have some conceptual designs. Again, everything here is conceptual, but we wanted to bring forth some ideas of how this building could fit with downtown from a standpoint of the old-town feel, the historic feel of downtown, and kind of meet with the existing infrastructure and match with the existing infrastructure. When we talk police and fire, again, this is primarily that 801 Water Street. Initially, the concept from a preliminary standpoint was to be on the west side of Willet Drive. Again, the building, conceptually, a little over 200,000 square feet on the west side of Willet Drive. When we looked at this, I guess, originally, if council remembers, the proposed middle school would be across the street, on the east side of Willet Drive. When we looked at the west side, certainly there are some, from a stormwater standpoint, you have some concerns there. So we also looked at the concept on the east side, so basically flip-flopping what would be the middle school uses to the other side of the street, and really putting all of the public safety, fire, police, as well as rescue, when you look at Maryview Hospital, all on one side of what would be Willet Drive, and putting all of the school uses on the other. Also, from an ease of development standpoint, from a stormwater, addressing a stormwater, things of that nature, the east side of Willet Drive meets those needs. So again, from a staff standpoint and from a developer's standpoint, the preferred or recommended option would be the east side of Willet Drive. Again, we also have some conceptual designs, something that can be either more traditional or something more modern. Again, all conceptual, just to see how and showcase how this could lay out. And then that leads us to tonight. Tonight, we are before you, as well as the public, to hear about your thoughts, their thoughts, on those options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the term conceptual is just that. These are all just concepts, nothing definitive.
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Let me see if my colleagues on council have any questions. Would you stand, would you remain at that lectern? Councilman Moody?
Thank you, mayor. I think it would be good for the members of the public that perhaps are not familiar with the PPEA process. I think it would be good if we explained what's allowed and what's not allowed when a city receives a proposal.
All right. That's a good, and I think the best person to do that would be our city attorney.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ashby.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, the Public Private Education and Infrastructure Act is set up in order to allow a municipality to consider both financial means as well as procurement process for the development of particular authorized public facilities. One of the things in terms of the discussion about how these structures are placed, it provides for expertise in the evaluation of both the financial arrangements as well as the construction arrangements for this process. Much like many public procurement processes, it places a emphasis in terms of the expertise, be it of inside staff or outside staff, in order to evaluate a proposal coming from a third party, to evaluate it both as the economics pertain to that particular project as well as the criteria set forth to meet a particular need from a locality. All of those things are evaluated within the committee process. Once those issues have solidified, much like this discussion here today, those issues are brought back before the City Council in one of two processes, if not more, and the council is then allowed to chime in with regard to that process. It is not a matter within the day-to-day efforts of the City Council, but it is a process that continues on while you all are away from the dais. But the committee is tasked with evaluating everything from financial means as well as the actual needs and assessments. In particular, this process picks up on needs assessments that were done in advance of this proposal, given the fact with Dr. Patton's forward thinking, we understand that the municipal needs going forward will be much different in terms of office space with technology and whatnot. And so those opportunities and considerations were built into the PPEA process, and that information was provided to the committee.
Thank you. Is it correct, Mr. Ashby, that once a local government receives an unsolicited proposal, it must post such notice and allow for other proposers to have the opportunity to submit a competing proposal? Is that correct?
Mayor, you are correct. When an unsolicited proposal is presented, to the extent that it meets a particular need and that proposal is being considered, there's a period of time, no less than 45 days, where that initial proposal is put back in the public realm such that other bidders can bid on that same process to make it, as we say, a public process and to offer opportunity for other individuals to chime in on our process.
And we did that in this case, and was there another proposer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will you explain what happened?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, the proposal was put out. It was advertised, I believe, maybe a little bit more than 45 days. The city did have two proposers at one period of time in the midst of the process of evaluating those proposers. One withdrew from the process, and that's how we are here today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Battle.
Let me explain something to the citizens. First of all, we were a city on life support. We were on life support because of bad deals in the past and because of the tunnel situation. And it's very important for me, as your representative, is to try to keep us from going there again. There have been some atrocious, terrible deals that have been made on your behalf in the past. I could go through them, but for the sake of time and concentrating on what we are here for, I won't. But as Mr. Ashley said, we are allowed to chime in. Isn't that nice? As your representatives, we are allowed to chime in. This is a terrible deal. It takes the representation out of your hands and your representatives and put it in the hands of the administration. Now, in the last two years, we've improved our city with about $144 million to the budget. But that had nothing to do with geniuses. That had to do with blessings in our strategic location, the adding of the jobs at the port where we distribute goods all over the country, one of the largest in the world to do that, our shipyard. So you see, all of these things are not anything that a genius up here or over there did. It was a blessing. Now, we're on our way back, and we're going to go into a blind situation where there are too many variables that will cost you too much money. The first thing I want is for Mr. Economic Development to please come back up and explain to you what memorandum of understanding is, then I'll comment afterwards.
All right. Thank you, sir. Let's have the city attorney explain what MOU is, and I recommend, because the citizens came for the public hearing, that we hear the public hearing and then give our personal thoughts at the end, if that's okay.
No, this is not a personal thought. I want the citizens to know the definition from the economic developing head of what memorandum of understanding is, so I can elaborate and enlighten them on what we could possibly be getting into.
And that's a legal question, Dr., Mr. Ashby?
But I'm not asking for the legal aspects. I'm asking for the definition of memorandum of understanding to the public.
Well, let's try if, if, Mr. A-
I think we're going to need that first.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Ashby.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, the city of Portsmouth has entered into a memorandum of understanding, which provides that in accordance with the PPEA, Ahmata Hoffler and the city of Portsmouth are entering into an agreement to present a proposal in accordance with the PPEA for the purposes of evaluating a public-private partnership for the purposes of building a- for the purposes of building a city hall and a public safety building. That MOU provides essentially that the city will follow the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia as well as the city code in order to investigate, propose, and evaluate a proposal for the construction and the potential financing of a city hall and a public safety building.
Mr. Ashby, is a memorandum of understanding binding in the Commonwealth of Virginia?
Only to the extent that it says, "This is the manner in which we will proceed." It does not commit the city to completing the process. It does not commit the city to a particular outcome. It just defines the method and manner for which we move forward under the law.
So in effect, it's non-bounding? It doesn't have the same legal status as a contract?
That's correct.
Mr. Battle?
Now, at the point we are now, which is they want approval for us to co-sign getting the architectural work done for this concept, that cost is $500,000. Now, once we allow them to do that one particular item, there are other things that if we back out at that point, that we are going to have to pay. And the expenditures will be probably, and I'm not a lawyer and I don't know, but it would be their time, it would be their effort, we'd have to pay the $500,000. Now, when you're doing architectural work, you're just feeding the numbers into a computer, and the computer prints the complete concept out. That situation or that could be done for as little as $20,000 or $30,000.
Mr. Battle, we advertise this as a public hearing, and let's let the public, let's open the public hearing in here.
I merely just trying to enlighten the public on--
I understand, but--
--what we're doing. They don't understand--
Architectural fees--
--and you should allow me to--
Go ahead.
--help them understand what we're going through.
Well, you're off on your architectural fees. They run anywhere from 7% to 12% of the total project. For example, if the project was $40 million, then the architectural fees would be close to $2.8 to $3 million.
That's what people ask.
So let's not put--
But that's not the--
Let's not put facts into the record here. Let's hear from the public.
Well, we are here to do the best by the public, not give anybody what they ask for, because from the day you're born to the day you die, people are going to ask for your money and as much of it as you'll give.
Thank you, sir.
So we need to represent you better than that.
And that's why we're asking for public input?
And I'm helping the public understand what we're doing.
Thank you, sir. With that, let's, before we, please, and again, for the newcomers that came in, please silence your phone. Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol again for speakers?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Again, before I open the public hearing, this is a public hearing on a concept. It's a public hearing on the location. It's not a public hearing on a deal, because a deal has not been made at all. So please limit your comments to location. If you think that this is the right place or the wrong place, we want to hear. Sir, I'm going to open the public hearing. Please do not attack anybody, because there's nobody to attack. No action has been taken. And so with that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I do have people who have signed up. And because you've signed up, I will take you first. But please still come to the lectern and state your name and your address. And our first speaker, I declare the public hearing open, is Jim Wright. And sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, thank you.
Will you speak into the microphone, please, sir?
My pleasure to be here. Thank you. Let me my phone out here. I was hoping to go last, because I'm right. And honestly, I wanted to hear other people speak. To give you some background, I'm a Craddock boy. I went off to Arthur Andersen. I'm not a practicing CPA, but I am one. I didn't have much development experience. I represented Boeing in their Eastern headquarters in Roslyn, their Eastern headquarters for Boeing. The other deals you wouldn't know, TRW, I did the largest deal in Northern Virginia in the top 10 existing today, $100 million. Folks, I'm not a developer. I'm a tenant broker. I represent corporations like Boeing to cut their deal. That's what I did. I'm now in ministry, not deals. However, I'm concerned, because this deal would be a cherry for a multitude of developers if you could only advertise it again and more broadly. It's a small deal. Mahler Hoffler's a fine company. But you guys, as a tenant broker, you would never get involved in doing plans with the developer, ever, ever. You would hold that back until you had your competitors. And right now, we have no competitors. But I ask you guys, can you republish it? Can you do it again? Because I have a few people that might want to look at it. Just a thought. Just open it up. So I just want the city-- Listen, I came here from Northern Virginia in Boeing Fairfax County for 37 years. I came last year. My dad has Alzheimer's dementia. I'm back. I'm excited about the city. I'm excited. I'm a Portsmouth boy. I was headed for Virginia Beach. I have a place there, but I'm here, and I love the city. I found out more about my city in the last year I never knew. I love it, and I want you guys and all people to be happy in this city. And I'm telling you right now, the financial situation here sounds there. I don't look at your financials. I could. But I just want you to step back and bid this again. Bid it again, folks.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Joanne Clark, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council and staff. I'm Joanne Clark, 4717 Thornwood Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I have some concerns and some questions, and I have some opinions. First of all, my concerns, timing. Timing, like an MOU, does have legal standing, and it depends what goes with it. Timing is, is this the right time for us? Are we adequately staffed in order to make this investment? Do we really have what we need in place as far as infrastructure, police coverage right On Nextdoor.com two weeks ago, 60-some people were complaining about break-ins in their vehicles and stolen vehicles. They were told by our police staff there wasn't enough staff to come out and address their concerns or write a report. If we already had all of our infrastructure in place, adequate police force staffing and fire department and so on, we would just be with bells on, excited about doing this project. We have a lot of needs right now, so priorities is an important aspect of this project. Now, I do have some experience with this very project, because not too long ago, I lived in another city, and we engaged in the same kind of deal with the same developer. There were some issues with the building. So my question to you all is, if you engage in this project, will you have a qualified architect and a building manager to handle these properties for maintenance and inspection on behalf of the taxpayers? As a stakeholder and a homeowner in this city, I'm concerned about you all and how you handle our revenue. Our tax revenues are important for so many reasons. You see many people in this audience who are of a certain age that are on fixed incomes, and we just really can't afford our taxes to go up one more bit. And this is a grandest plan, and it's a beautiful one. I was thrilled to see brick on some of your architectural's rendering. Also, I'll make a note that I think it's a handicap issue, the way you have the city hall building addressed and separated from the parking area. I like it the way it is here. I can only take steps away from my car, get on the elevator and come up. Sorry, guys, it's easier for me. And like with everyone else here, folks are of a certain age, and we're just getting older. We have a lot of residents, taxpayers here that are getting older. I hope you make that a consideration. I'd like to hear some more about what some other citizens' concerns are, so I will say thank you for letting me give my opinion and asking the questions, and thank you much.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ursula Murphy, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council and staff. I haven't been here in a while.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Certainly. It's Ursula Murphy, 2001 Elmhurst Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia, in the Manor View section of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. I come before you because I have some concerns. Unlike the previous lady, you know, I'm concerned with the timing of all of this. And like the other lady did say, I'd like to see some other proposals. I'd like to see if Bruce Smith might be interested in bringing a project to Portsmouth. Mr. Thompson, perhaps, might be willing to bring a project to Portsmouth. The Breeden Company may be interested in bringing a project of this nature to Portsmouth. I understand that, and Mr. Moore didn't get a chance to tell us who the other proposal was from, but I'd like to hear who that proposal was from. I do not believe that these new projects need to be in the downtown portion of Portsmouth, the old town section. I believe they need to be more inland. Flooding is a problem. The county street parking garage flooding is a problem. How about if you're going to put something in the Willett Hall area, put the whole kit and caboodle there? Put it all there. Or put it over on the Frederick Boulevard side. We've got a huge piece of land right there next to the compounds. Put it there. My other concern is if these two buildings, which pretty much are what you're talking about, this building and the one directly behind us, are they going to be a part of the other proposed sale of buildings on the waterfront, namely our court complex and our jail that we're trying to get rid of with no input from the citizens? Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Sue Landerman, and ma'am, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name's Sue Landerman, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I live at 1519 Bradley Street in West Parkview. I'm here because I really am interested in the relocating of City Hall, but I would prefer it to be more centrally located in the city. Would be much more convenient for everyone, would, I think, would be the best thing to do. And I also like the idea, what the lady said before, of having the building at City Hall being done with the parking being underneath. I like that myself, but would like to have it more centrally located. And as far as the buildings here on the waterfront today, I'm hoping that the city will highly consider doing hotels as opposed to any kind of an apartment complex for revenue. It would just be phenomenal what the city would gain from it. And with what we have with the Beach Music Awards that's developing, we have worldwide marketing for our city. I mean, it's just unbelievable. Here, we have Mile Marker Zero that has been here forever, of course, but we're going to enjoy expounding on our Mile Marker Zero and make it a glorious place to come, from boating people from all over the world to our ports, because they will know about Portsmouth. They don't know about Portsmouth or all of Tidewater. We have so much to offer, it's unbelievable. So with our developing project that we have going on, and all of you have the material on it now, we look forward to hearing more from you and with a proclamation of the city to support it and to be able to move forward in getting sponsorship for it from each city. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Cunningham, and ma'am, if you would give your address, please, when you come to the lectern.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Cunningham. I'm the president of the Shade Terrace Civic League, and I live at 116 Constitution Avenue. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members and staff, by framing this conversation as a location conversation and not an overall assessment of the proposal, you're doing your citizens a disservice. And I think by the turnout here tonight, you can see that we did not expect to have a location conversation, but a viability conversation. If, Mayor, by your own admission, the current 600-spot parking garage at County Street is inadequate, then the logic for building a similarly sized parking garage in the new complex is a faulty logic. Doing it at the expense of $18 to $23 million is financially irresponsible. The entire Suffolk complex for their municipal government cost $23 million, and you are proposing to spend this amount on a parking garage. Unacceptable. But if we're talking about location, this site proposed is two blocks from the current location. It's a Zone A flood zone, susceptible not only to hurricane surge but to sea level rise in general. It's financially irresponsible to build your house on sand. How are you justifying moving this two blocks back where it will still be inadequate and uninhabitable during hurricanes or in the event of sea level rise, which we know is Beyond moving back just two blocks, we all recognize here the faulty logic of putting our current jail and our current city hall in the most valuable, developable land in our city. our city. When we move it two blocks back, aren't we setting ourselves up for the exact same problem once our city grows up around us? We should not look at the short-term gain of two blocks back as being part of this great infrastructure development. It's setting us up for the same problem we have right now, needing to move these buildings back, but maybe just 10 or 15 or 20 years down the line. And then lastly, my last point here tonight, this site is at the westernmost point of this city. That is not accessible to its citizens. You should not have to pay in a parking garage to come voice your opinion about your tax bill, maybe your, you know, registration for your car. At this proposed location, having a parking garage necessitates us paying to park. There are plenty of centrally located, not Zone A flood zone areas where your own citizens would not have to pay to park in order to speak to their government officials. Your job as a city government is to make financially prudent decisions for your citizens and there is no way location being the first point that I can argue tonight, that this is a financially prudent decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Please, let's hold down the, your applause. Be respectful of the speakers that are speaking and those that follow. The next speaker is Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes and if you will state your address.
My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. We, the people, are the owners of public property and the elected are contractual agents. We, the people, didn't tell you to demolish the waterfront. The elected are committed an unlawful act that began at the City Council retreat in February 2018. The people weren't there, the people weren't there to tell the elected what they wanted for downtown Portsmouth. The elected usurped the sovereignty of the people at this retreat. The people did not specifically delegate to you, the elected, to be our contractual agent to destroy the waterfront. The elected, or as we call them contractual agents, made an unlawful decision without the people's knowledge or consent. We, the people, are here to say no. We are not given our consent to demolish our property on the waterfront. The second issue is the unsolicited proposal that you have allowed to move forward to this point. Let's review what the elected contractual agents want to give away to Amada Hoffler, a developer, for $2.16 million. In addition, the elected wants the people to pay a 2% increase per year for the next 20 years on something we don't even know what it's for. In addition to getting rid of the people's property, pay a 2% increase per year on something we don't know about, our contractual agents, the elected, want to pay an additional $18.4 million for a parking garage of 670 spaces. This proposal is really unusual. It is a method to cheat the people out of their value of their waterfront property that includes the civic center. The civic center is valued at around $60 million. The people did not specifically delegate to you, the elected, to be our contractual agent at the City Council retreat where you decided to make four big things without the people's knowledge or consent. And one of those four big things was the Crawford Gateway revitalization strategy to demolish our public property on the waterfront. The reason you, the contractual agents, the elected, brought the people into this war of words is this. The elected failed to allow the individuals to be sovereign and instead made them dependent upon you, the elected. Also, the elected and appointed have become dependent upon experts and professionals to do the work of the city and not the citizens and employees. The city employees haven't done their job in the years. The employee's job to take care of buildings and equipment hasn't been done since the '70s. This failure has led to the war between the people and the contractual agents, the elected. Another issue causing the war is the flight of people out of the city. People are leaving the city. From 1970 to 2018, the population has decreased by over 16,000 people. The experts have told the elected and appointed to destroy the waterfront and put up apartments, this will bring the people back to Portsmouth. The elected and appointed are planning to destroy the waterfront as a trick to get people to move to Portsmouth. It ain't going to happen. The foundation of any successful enterprise is building of relationships. Relationships are built with communication. Since the structure of the city is broken, there's no communication, work is not getting done and there's no accountability. No, I, one of many, do not give my consent to allow Amada Hoffler to destroy the people's property on the waterfront or elsewhere. Invest the people's taxpaying money into the repair of all buildings, create the Police and Fire Administration office in the old civic center, add a chef's school in it to feed the safety workers. We, an official Coast Guard city, let the old civic center guard our coast and the interior of our city.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Pamela Capell. And ma'am, if you will state your address, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas and City Council. I'm delighted to be here tonight to share some of my thoughts with you. I'm very excited about the prospect of changing our waterfront. The idea of a hotel, the idea of restaurants, the idea of shops, it's marvelous. It's marvelous. And I'm certain that Amada Hoffler Group is staffed with honorable people and I am pleased that Dan Hoffler's mother still lives in Portsmouth and that he is a Portsmouth boy. I mean, all of that is wonderful. But he and his company are big time. We do not have staff, and I'm not being critical of staff, I'm just stating a fact, we do not have staff with the experiences in multimillion-dollar real estate transactions. We need to hire, as a consultant, if we move forward on this, a real estate consultant who is used to doing multimillion-dollar deals. We need to hire a real estate lawyer who deals with multimillion-dollar transactions. That way, we will be protected. They will ensure that Portsmouth is not taken advantage of and that we, on the waterfront, we do it right the first time. When you play with the big boys, you have to be able to compete with the big boys. And I like the stack option. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is John Wright. And sir, you have five minutes and please state your address.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. My name is John Wright, resident of the city. My business address is 4021 Seaboard Court in the city. I, too, am excited about some of what has been planned. I'm excited about the removal of the city services centers and things of that nature from the waterfront. I am not in favor of the locations. I would like to see those moved more internally to the center locations of the city. There are some cost savings that could be had by doing that, by instead of having stacked in garage parking, which is the most expensive alternative of parking versus the surface parking, go to areas where land is available where you could put 650 parking spaces, surface, on the surface. Some of the positive things I like about it is what you all are exploring, you're not reinventing the wheel. This has been done in many localities in the state. Amada Hoffler is a very successful, knowledgeable, astute company. As Ms. Capell said, they're big boys. Well, Portsmouth has developed a lot of big boys that have done a lot of good things. It's nice to have them come back to our area and want to invest in our city. They're a good developer. They know what they're doing. They've done this process a number of times. I think it would be prudent that you strongly entertain what they have on the table. Not that it's perfect at this point, but in a memorandum of understanding, you work together to come to a conclusion that is successful for both parties. Yes, it's a risk and reward for the developer. They're taking the risk, they get the reward. What we get is we eventually get the property back on the tax rolls that has not been on the tax rolls for a long time. The most expensive property that we have in our city, the waterfront. I don't believe that we need our civic center downtown. I do believe that it needs to be in a central location in the city, whether it's at Victory Crossing or wherever, but I do think you could combine them all into one location and I think that would work. I think there's a good reason to have the private sector own and manage these facilities in addition to the tax rolls, putting them back on the tax rolls at some point in the future. Not to be disparaging of our maintenance staff around the city, but we don't have a very good reputation of maintaining our city facilities. Amada Hoffler has a stellar reputation of maintaining their facilities that they own. They have stockholders, they have bondholders, they have people they are accountable to that makes, makes them do the right things. The developments they have done, they have done very well. I may be a little, little out of the weeds on this because, and a little late to the party as to the information, but I know these people. I grew up with these people. The designs are nice, that's fine, you know, but I think you've got an opportunity to work through the details and make this thing work for all parties concerned. I know that there's a reason why we want to keep some of this downtown, to keep downtown alive and continue to keep High Street thriving and things of that nature, but I think we need to move this thing west of Effingham Street where the rest of the city is. Not everything needs to be downtown. But again, I'm in favor of, of a agreement with Amada Hoffler to move forward. As to the design standards, I think you cut your financial deal in advance of the design and whatever that design comes up with, there'll be a dollar value attached to that and as long as your department heads don't get out of, get out of, well, they need, they need to live within the means that they have. So you design your, you design your building after you cut your deal. You cut your deal, that'll, that'll determine what you can build, what you have to live with, what your department heads have to live with. That's the normal process. Not that we put $500,000, $475,000, whatever the number is, although that is not an unreasonable, believe it or not, I'm in the development business, that's not an unreasonable architectural fee, but I would tell you, don't pay that in advance, don't park your money aside. Have that be part of the deal after you structure your financial deal as to what the rents are going to be, when the taxes are going to be paid and things of that nature. That would be the normal process I would recommend that you go with. But I am in favor of this developer doing business in our town. They will do a great job on the waterfront. Again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is R.C. Smith. And sir, you have five minutes once you get to the lectern and please state your address.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council and Staff, my name is R.C. Smith, 13 Columbia Court, and the President of the Old Town South Civic League. We have a concern that the city is considering a non-solicited bid from Amada Hoffler without the benefit of receiving bids from other developers. If it is true, we have to pay a non-refundable fee of approximately $1.5 million. It is important that we make the best use of our limited funds. We understand the need to build new facilities, but we do have a problem with the manner of choosing a developer without other bids. It is our hope that the City Council will open our process up again so that other developers will have an opportunity to give their other ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Godolgi Atrosky. And sir, you have five minutes and please state your address when you come to the lectern.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council and fellow interested parties. Members of Council-
State your address, please.
You have it on my speaker card, sir.
Would you say for the benefit of everybody?
No, sir. You received from me a communication earlier by email which states my position on what you have under consideration this evening. We are a municipality of highly constrained financial means. And there is a principle of economics called opportunity cost, which is to say that when you have limited financial means, which almost everybody does, if you spend your money in one area, that money is not available to be spent in another. And that is the condition we find ourselves in with regard to the Portsmouth City Jail. The jail also occupies part of the Crawford Gateway and it is a much bigger undertaking than the one that this unsolicited proposal involves. It is in a crisis situation. There is currently a court case because of a disagreement between the city and the Sheriff's Department over whether the jail is usable for the, for the foreseeable future. And depending on how the courts ultimately rule on that, we may find ourselves in an emergency situation. So to me, it is totally irresponsible to be considering this unsolicited proposal when we have a looming crisis that needs to be resolved and we do not have the funds to expend on both the new jail and this move. According to the press accounts, when the city put its condemnation notices on the jail and the other buildings on that plaza-
Mayor, I need a point of order.
We are talking about the City Hall and the Public Safety Building, not the jail, so limit your remarks to that.
Yes, sir. I am talking about the City Council building in terms of our economic opportunity cost.
Okay.
It is a factor in what you decide to do. Unless you have some money squirreled away somewhere else that isn't visible to the citizenry, I do not see how you can accommodate both. With that said, let me also echo what others have stated before me, that the location selected for this project that's entailed in the unsolicited proposal is wrong. Sea level rise is coming and it's coming at an accelerating rate. It is pointless to move just a few blocks away and still face the same problem before that 50-year life expectancy. And the movement of that complex should be west of Effingham Street as previously stated, but not far beyond Effingham Street because of the economic impact that a total removal of the civic center from downtown would have on businesses that are already struggling. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our people who signed up. Now, this is a public hearing. You need not have signed up to speak. If you desire to speak, please come to the lectern, state your name and address because we need that for the record. And you'll have five minutes, sir, if you'll identify yourself and address.
My name is Larry Donnell. I live at 900 County Street, right down, right down the street. I initially heard about the construction of the City Hall area and- I initially heard about the construction of the City Hall area and as well as the jail, and I agree with it when I initially heard about it, because I felt that the city jail was old and...
Sir, we're not talking about the jail.
Okay. You're talking about the construction, I understand that.
Only City Hall and the Public Safety Building.
Yes, okay. But those areas now, as you have proposed, to be moved in other areas, I feel that the city, being divided such as that to be moved by a few blocks down the street, should be... They should all be put in one area. So just like most cities, the municipal areas are all together. And then I asked, if I could, you know, what's the rush? You know, you have one solicited bid, why not wait? Just like Mr. Wright had said already, you know, I would beg you to just wait. I know that there's a court order out there for the city jail for 60 days. I don't know if that 60 days is over.
Sure.
I know what you're saying. But nevertheless, why not wait? Just wait. Thank you all for letting me share.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Cliff Page, 465 Primrose Street. Ladies and gentlemen, I would propose to you this evening that you have the cart before the horse. Thirty years ago, when I was on the D1 Committee for five years, a proposal of any of this would have come before the Design Review Committee. In fact, if the City Hall or the jail had been changed in any way, it would have had to come before the D1 Committee. The building across the street, which was the police chief's headquarters, which I refer to as the bunker, is now a berm. It has been demolished, and if it is anything like the other buildings that I reported to you some weeks ago, it was done without the proper demolition permits. Now, I have a concern with this. I have no standing here to put a motion before you, but I hope you all will listen carefully to what I say, and if any of you feel like I do, please put a motion forward. This is not a single matter. This is not a two- or three-issue matter. It is at least a four-issue matter, because nothing is being said about what you're going to do with the City Hall. What will happen is that you will turn it over to Amada Hoffler, and they will do what they want, and because this is Zone T1 and no longer in the D1, you will have authority, and the citizens will not, who are designers or people who have some knowledge, will have no input into your judgment, and they are there to give you their expertise. That's why I was on that committee, and an architect was on there for five years. And we fought these kind of battles for everything up and down this street and on this waterfront, and I have my fingers all over this downtown, trying to get better design. That has been stripped from the people who have design expertise. This should be four separate issues. Number one, I have no difficulty in saying that Amada Hoffler has the best entrance of Portsmouth, but they also have their own business interests, which is understandable. We all want to see people make money, and we'd like to see the Portsmouth boys come back here. But the fact of the matter is, the way it's being done is going to leave Portsmouth out of the decision-making when it comes to the City Hall, and we're being asked to make decisions right now on other matters, but not saying, should we even move it at all? Or what should we put here? If you go back for 30 years to the time when Mr. House and Chet McGinnis died in a plane crash and they came back from Annapolis, what did they say in the comprehensive plan, which has been mouthed since that time by every urban planning consultant, up to a half a million dollars in fees? They said, we should have low profile on the waterfront, we should have building out to the center and higher, we should have buildings that are going to attract tourism. We have mouthed that over and over and over again, and then the city councils have done what they wanted, and they've gone with the developers and not listened. And I might point out that I've gone through the financial statements of a lot of people today who ran for office, and there's a lot of people who did these big buildings around here who have put money in the pockets of a number of you people when you were running for office. Not every one of you, I might add, please. The issue here is this. If you go back, and these are things that I've been talking about for 30 years, if you go back to the Dusseldorf, Germany study, which is a valley that was, which has high rises all around, and it's just like the eastern, western, southern branches of the Elizabeth River, they had to tear down their high rises. Why? Because it created an inversion, an inversion which created a smog. We have a similar situation, and we're just coming out of a hurricane. We need to have low rises building up to the center, which is higher, so that the deflection of the wind which is coming in this direction goes up. The other thing is, I say no to anything out there by Willett Hall, and I say that for many years I have said that we should have our chambers in the center of the city.
You don't have to yell. We can hear you.
We should have our City Hall in the center of the city so that everyone can get to it, and it should be over where Jeffrey Wilson is, and I believe that we should also expand the council to have wards and a at-large council. So if you want to build a new council, change the government so we can have more democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, please come to the lectern, you'll have five minutes. Our next speaker. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Contral Devon. I'm a citizen of Portsmouth, I'll write it down for you later. I just had to get up to say ditto to everything he said, and at the end of the day, the deal sucks, and the citizens do not want it. Can we reconsider? Anyone who feels like paying almost $20 million for a parking lot in a city that's struggling needs to resign.
Next speaker, please. Ma'am, please. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, citizens of Portsmouth and members of city council. My name is Anthony Brown, I live at 533 Barlow Drive. It's amazing to me how an unsolicited proposal gains this much momentum, that we're here expending this time and effort discussing something that the city never asked for. It's unsolicited, the city never asked for. Now, I understand there was a RFP, a request for proposal, that went out to give competing businesses a chance, an opportunity to submit their bids, but this task is monumental for Portsmouth. We got to do better than a classified-sized advertisement in the newspaper to let these people know that this opportunity exists for other developers, because like the first gentleman that spoke, I too know some developers that might want to throw their hat in the bidding ring. And I know it's not a contract yet, but there seems to be negotiation prior to signing the contract, so, and it seems to be negotiation with one particular entity. We need to open it up and let some other developers get in, throw their hats in the ring, and have an opportunity to make this thing happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and city staff. My name is Tony Goodwin. I live in the Parkview section of the city, and of course do business here as a real estate agent and licensed professional. I have to give you a little bit of history, of course. When a lot of people ask me that question, why did we build City Hall and the court complex and the jail on the waterfront? And that is because it was obviously condemned and taken for the public good and had to be done that way, based on the fact that it was railroad property and so on and so forth. So hence the reason why we have it here in the first place. Now, 60 years later, 50 years later, whatever that number is, we're ready to move again. We're ready to do it right. We're ready to get it out of this downtown or off the waterfront and make this property its highest and best use. A little bit closer to home when it comes to the history. 2007, I stood up in front of this council and this body and questioned why we were building a 98,000-square-foot court complex directly across the street from the existing one that was here, and only putting 25 parking spaces with it. This body then immediately, within two weeks, I believe Ms. Simmons was on the board at the time, said, we rescind that motion to move forward with that complex and where we have it today. Somewhere where there is a little bit more sprawling land, somewhere there where we were planning on putting our Public Safety Building behind it, where we potentially were going to put our city jail behind that as well. We just fell short of finishing the project, and now we're here 10 years later, talking about it all over again. So I caution the tale of basically making the wrong decisions on highest and best use of locations. I think Mr. Wright made it best just to say, centralize our city complex, our City Hall buildings, into the center of the city. I wasn't necessarily a fan of pulling it out of the city, but I tell you one thing, that there is one person or one group of people that dine and shop in this downtown section more so than the people in this building, and that is our police department. Our police department and fire officials are crawling all over the city when it comes to lunchtime. I have seen but a few, and Mr. Pace being one of those today, in one of our downtown businesses, establishments and shopping. So I would say that weighing that factor would be one thing. And then to think about it, you're basically replacing this building at half the size over there on County Street. So is that the wisest choice? Or do we take the lesser-cost approach, building a complex where you're proposing to put the Public Safety Building now, and building it over there where you can sprawl it out, build 650 parking spaces on the ground, build three or four buildings with City Hall complex there, centralized to the city, and let's bring that Public Safety Building back downtown? No one has talked about the Washington Park site that's been sitting there as an eyesore to our gateway of our downtown, that can't be used for anything else but commercial because of the EPA Superfund site that says it has to be used for something else other than residential, and you're sitting there looking at an overgrown fenced-off area for now going on close to 15 years. So use that site sitting right beside your number-one fire station for your Public Safety Building that's also going to feed into your courthouse that's built right behind it, and put those things together, highest and best use, perfect location scenario. Every police officer can get in a car and be anywhere in the city on the interstate in less than five minutes, at the right speed, of course. So with that being said, let's think this thing through. I think it's great that we pull these buildings off this waterfront, because this is definitely not the highest and best use today. Now, take into consideration, the repurposing of this property, is apartments the right answer? Because you do have a heavy industrial zone across the water from us, and I'm sure people on Admiral's Landing have always been sweeping up dust from ships being repaired constantly. So that's another topic of discussion, but today, you want to know about location for City Hall? Former Woodrow Wilson High School site. Sprawl it out, save the taxpayers some money, just like Mr. Wright said. Don't have to build parking garages, spread it out, make it look really nice, centralize to the taxpayers, the people who pay for it. Bring the Public Safety Building into downtown, because you have your courthouse here. You have the fire, number-one fire station right beside the potential location of a site that will probably never be used again.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Hello. My name is Marion Outlaw. I live 550 Madison. First of all, I want to let everybody know here that I'm a resident of Portsmouth. I was born here, I'm 64 years old. I seen Portsmouth come from nothing and grow a little. First of all, I just want to say, Mr. Paul, that you're kind of so right with some of the things you mentioned with the toll. I'm going to get back on this, but let me finish what I have to say. You went from the toll, me seeing the toll being paid for at the price of 10 cent the first time, 25 cent to 50 cents the second time, and now we have it so that the city is absolutely have us paying money from our city property. Now, that used to be our personal property, to pay our decals, and now moving to where the DMV is responsible, holding all these people money from Portsmouth so that they have to pay, in order for them to get their decals, they have to pay a certain amount of money or toll. Well, that's absolutely ridiculous, because half of this stuff, I'm not bashing what you're saying, sir. I'm going to get on it.
We're not talking about the tolls.
I know, and I'm not either, but I'm saying that it's a major concern. The reason it's a major concern is because half of the building and the things that are built here, the people don't want to come here and shop here because they know that they're going to have to pay this kind of money. And it's so hard for us to even, as far as, to think about building a building like that first, where we can't even fix the problems that we have in here already. And some of those major problems, like I said, is for police officers. Yeah, you can build a new building for them, but that don't help them as far as them being really happy and satisfied with some of the things that are going on here in this state and this city. Virginia and Portsmouth, I want to tell you, we in a rut right now, and building that is important. Like I said, I want to see it built, but I want to see a lot of other things here built first, especially me being a resident of Portsmouth. Me seeing the tunnel actually being built, me seeing the jailhouse actually being built, all those things I saw being built. Now, like I said, I would love to see this building up, and I want to see it move and us move forward, but before we move forward, we have to fix the problems that we got here first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Yes, sir, if you'll come to the lectern, you'll have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Well, good evening, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and to the citizens of the city. My name is William Richardson. I reside at 320 Went Street in the city of Portsmouth, the Cavalier Manor area. I was born and raised in this city, having served as a pastor and citizen of this city, just moving back from Richmond, Virginia. And I want to share with you, sir, first of all, that I personally feel that before we spend money to move City Hall, that we take that money and get out of the deal with Elizabeth City tolls, so that the people will want to drive and spend their money in our city. Secondly, I would like for you all to consider about moving the City Hall to a more suitable location, more so in the city, the middle part of the city, but I also wanted to know that if you consider moving this, will our citizens have access to the new building through transit, local transit? And finally, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say to you, even though I have just come back to the area, if you want the people to respect and consider the city of Portsmouth as a city of choice, then you too, sir, must respect the citizens of the city that you serve.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. Is there a next speaker? Please come to the lectern and state your name and your address, and you'll have five
My name is Latoya Haight. I live at 5909 Fox Street. I'll be brief. I just want to reiterate what a lot of people were saying about the relocation of these buildings. I do agree that it will revitalize our city and bring lots more people to it for several reasons, but it seems to be a thing in our city where there's not a lot of choices. So my issue is about the unsolicited one proposal that we're just allowing to spread without any other options available. So as far as the location's concerned, there's several different places that we could invite this opportunity to, and I just feel with just relying on one person or one developer without exploring different options would not be beneficial to our city. So I hope that we do just have the opportunity just to see what others may have available to throw in the pot before we just give one person the total opportunity to do whatever they want to do with our city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please come to the lectern. Please come to the lectern, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Christopher Kushner. My business address is 606 Court Street. And I think there have been some wonderful points made here tonight. I do think that building in a Zone A with rising tides is an issue. But in regards to location, I want to speak as a person who does not currently own a car, so, and I think I get to ride the city bus a lot, and I've noticed a lot of residents of this town are also on the bus. So, if you do go to a location that is proposed for the rising tide, but is away from the downtown area, how accessible will it be to those residents that do not have the access to just be able to drive somewhere in the middle of the city? What will be the public transit options for those people? Then the other thing I want to speak to your council about is, as a business owner in the downtown area, I've heard some opinions that, again, to centralize this and get out of the downtown area, that will create a void for those of us who own businesses down here. I own the music shop downtown, and as Tony Goodwin mentioned, when I see the people who work here enjoying our downtown area, enjoying our restaurants, you know, I'm here seven days a week downtown. It's a different crowd during the week than we see on the weekends. But we need that seven-day revenue. As restaurant owners, and myself as a shop owner, we need the foot traffic downtown. What will fill the void if everything just leaves? That's the final point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. Please come to the lectern and state your name and your address, and you'll have five Next speaker. I thought I saw some movement over there to my right. Nobody else? Okay. Well, I declare this public hearing closed.
Mayor?
Councilman Battle has asked for the floor. Councilman Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, we've all voiced different opinions. Put it here like that, or don't like that, or do this, or look. But what I'm saying is this is not a good deal. I have scoured every phase of it. The cost overruns are enormous, and we don't even talk about that. Because they're written in in code, in language, that you have to have a certain amount of experience to understand. You voted for me, and I told you I would bring you the mail. This deal will strap us as bad as that tunnel has strapped us, if not worse. There are so many open ends to it. And once we take one step, this proposal and the PEA or whatever it is, is designed to entrap a city with low IQ. Because a deal like this, if you take it or go for it, you just don't understand. But you voted for me. I'm here with my chest out, and I'm gonna tell you, whichever way it goes, I'm gonna do the best I can as your representative. But this is the worst thing that ever could be done to our city. See, everybody has their own interests, but I got the interest of the city. How are we gonna give you the $600 stipends? How are we gonna pay for the schools? How are we gonna build a school that we keep deferring? How are we gonna adjust the jail situation if we have to build one? This is a bad deal. We need to relax and enjoy the success that we've had as a city, and not be fast-tracked running head-on into misery. Most of the people you still be, including myself, will be gone in three or four or five or six years. But you'll be strapped for life. And for those folk who are not here, it doesn't matter who you are, it affects you too. And you lost your chance to do something for your city, for your children, for yourselves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to take this moment to thank each and every one of you for coming out and being present at this public hearing. It's critically important that citizens stay engaged in the process. I think one of the things, as I looked at the proposal and read a lot of information about this, one of the things that come to my mind under the PPEA is a public-private partnership. And the most recent public-private partnership that we've had, that most of us are aware of, is the tunnel deal. And I assure you, as I sit here, I have many concerns about this particular proposal. So much so, that we, as a council, will address those. But under the process that we've undertaken, under the PPEA, we have followed that process. And with your oversight, and asking for you to continue to watch as we go forward, we will continue to do the right thing on behalf of the citizens. As I said, I have concerns. Those concerns will be addressed as we go forward. We have not made a financial commitment in terms of a contract. And I encourage you, just like you showed up here tonight, to stay engaged in the process. I'll leave you with this. I don't know where this building is gonna go, but one thing I do know as a businessperson that I'm absolutely concerned about is that we don't give anyone, any developer, we don't give any developer the full store, and we have to pay the bill coming up. And so, we're gonna be vigilant in that way. We're gonna watch it. I want to have the information so that we can share with you, so that we can make an informed decision together how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to applaud the community for coming out for this public meeting on our City Hall. I wanted to be able to hear what the concerns of the city was, because a lot of times, we deliberate amongst ourselves, and the decisions that we have to make are only on the conversations that we hear between us. I am in agreement with a lot that has been said today. I have a lot of questions about, and unsolicited bid means that we didn't ask for it. So, if we didn't ask for it, then why don't we ask for some others to come in? Of course, we had one other bidder who withdrew for whatever reasons. We don't know all of the details with that. We don't all know, you know, all of the factors that were lying in that. And I know that you would want to know that information as well. Have some notes here on some of the things that you said, and you made some very sound comments, because this is your city, and you've elected us to serve you. So, we have to weigh in on what you have said tonight. You've made some very good comments, and we will be taking them into consideration. And we want to be transparent in the way that we do this. And so, the information that you have heard tonight from your fellow citizens and the information that we have heard tonight helps us to make a sound decision on that as well. So, I appreciate your comments and your time out tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Battle has asked for the floor, but under Roberts' rules, I'm gonna give the opportunity to any other member of council who's not yet spoken to speak. Okay. Yes, Councilman Clark.
Yes, I would like to just echo what some of my colleagues have said, and first thanking everybody for coming out tonight for your information. And just so everybody's aware, I took notes on every single speaker that we had. This is how important this is. It's not our decision, it's the citizens' decision for some of this information. So, I listened closely to what everyone had to say and took notes that I can go back and look at later. This is something going forward, and this is in the infancy of it. No decisions have been made, no contracts have been made. This is just the very early discussions. And if this project or another project goes forward, there will be multiple public hearings in this process. This is just the beginning of many. So, this isn't a one-time shot that you get to come talk to us. This will be an ongoing process. So, you know, I like to hear the comments, you know, about the, you know, location of City Hall and some of that. That's great information that I can go back and digest it, you know, as we go forward with these plans. One of the other things I do want to mention is, you know, people talking about the location of the public safety, you know, police and fire. I will say, some of that input came from our police chief and our fire chief and their administrative staff. A lot of that is more strategic than location, like City Hall being available to the citizens. When you're responding police and fire, some of that does need to be strategic to offer a great response time to all of our citizens. So, some of that is not, you know, we look at some of our experts in those fields and rely on their information as where these go, just like we would for fire stations and anything like that. So, I'd just like to say again, thank you for coming out tonight and gave you some valuable information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo everyone's comments in that this is the start of a public process, and some of your comments on putting the two buildings together and some of that kind of thing are very important for us to hear. The comments about the handicap accessibility, and when somebody mentioned, I think Ms. Clark mentioned, having the attached parking to the building. Think about the times we come in here in the pouring down rain and we don't get wet. That becomes important. But know that, contrary to some of the things we've heard tonight, there is no deal. All we have is a proposal from the developer. Nobody's agreed to what they suggested. Of course, they suggested the moon and the stars. There are, what is required in this process is that the city procurement folks hire experts in engineering and architecture and those kinds of things to review this. And there'll be zillions of questions that you will have and we will have going forward. And then we'll talk about who shot John and what it cost. Right now, we don't know. We're way early in the process to know. So, it's not a deal to like or not like right now, because there is no deal. But I'm excited about hearing from you and what we can do going forward to further develop the downtown waterfront and provide better accommodations for our city staff, our city people, citizens, and of course, our Public Safety Administration offices. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Battle, you want to send?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow night, we'll be voting to allow Amada Hoffler Group to go forward with this memorandum of understanding. That means that we're gonna pay $475,000 to have the schematics or the architectural drawings done for a building that I gave you, and an example of how cheap that could be. Once we take that step, if we do back out, we still have to pay that amount. Also, if we back out of the deal, period, we're still gonna have to pay them for their time, their meetings, because they can take us to court for all these things. But besides this, there are so many underlying other things that's gonna cripple this city. So, John will get shot tomorrow night, when we vote to move forward on this, what I consider bad deal for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think you were referring to who shot John, not...
John. It don't matter who shoot him. He's gonna die tomorrow.
I just wanted, I wanted to clear that up. All right, we'll conclude with my remarks. This was not a required public hearing. Let me emphasize that. There's nothing in the city code, nothing in the state code that requires this. I had recommended it to my council colleagues, that we hold this public hearing, because it was really important that we hear from you. And at this point, and you're... Please, please have order. And I echo the comments of my colleagues on council, that we heard some great, great comments tonight, and ideas and opinions. And that's why we ask, and I ask you many times, if you still want to talk, and I'm gonna do something that's unusual. If you did not speak and you have an opinion about this, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to come back to the lectern. I'll reopen the public hearing to hear your opinion. That's how important it is to all seven of us up here on council. So, if you have not spoken and you have an opinion about the location, then please come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Elvira Johnson-Williams. I reside at 3313 Armstead Drive. I'm a little bit confused. I'm trying to figure out, you're just saying this is an unsolicited proposal. Am I correct? Because I know I can ask you questions you're not gonna answer, and that's the problem that I see here. We ask you all questions, but you won't answer. And then when you shut us down, you're gonna tell us what you're gonna do. So, I need to know, being that you're taking all of what we've said into consideration, I have two questions, really. First, what's the rush? Second, what you planning on voting on tomorrow night? I need to know that, because you're confusing me. I don't know about nobody else in here. But if this is nothing that you have considered, or you're thinking about considering, and we all know that it's a bad deal, what's the vote for tomorrow night?
Dr. Patton, would you give her a copy of the agenda? Would you make sure that when your staff...
So, in other words, in other words, what you're telling us, the citizens of this city, that what we come to you and tell you we don't want, regardless of what we don't want, you're gonna vote for what you want? Is that what you're telling us?
No, ma'am.
Because that's exactly what I'm hearing. Because it don't sound right. It don't sound fair. And it sounds to me that regardless of you being so kind, Mayor, to have this meeting, this public hearing, that you did not have to have to let the citizens know what you're doing with our money, I kind of think you on the wrong side this time, because you're telling us one thing, but you blowing smoke up the hump posts of the others. So, I'm kind of tired. It's not a personal attack, it's just a personal fact.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Mayor, I think I'd like to have the city manager read the ordinance that's gonna be on the agenda tomorrow night.
Do you have that with you? Would you read it, please?
Title, Appropriating Funds for Contingent Design Cost Reimbursement. Issue, Adoption of an Ordinance, One, Establishing a New Project in the FY 2020 Capital Improvement Fund, Known as the City Hall Relocation Project. And Two, Appropriating and Transferring the Sum $475,000 in Interest Savings from the Debt Service Fund Balance to the City Hall Relocation Project. Background, In 2018, the city unveiled the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Project, with the goals of relocating City Hall and police and fire offices, and revitalizing the area surrounding Crawford Street and the roundabout to the Elizabeth River. In May 2018, AHP Development LLC, subsidiary of Amada Hoffler Properties, INC., presented the city with an unsolicited proposal for the construction of a new City Hall, a new police and fire public safety building, and a new parking garage, and the subsequent redevelopment of the vacated properties. The city received the proposal in accordance with the Virginia Public Private Education and Infrastructure Act of 2001 as amended PPEA. As required by the PPEA, the city gave public notice of the receipt of the proposal and invited competing proposals. One additional proposal was received and subsequently withdrawn. By Resolution R 18-33, adopted on November 27, 2018, City Council directed city staff to analyze the... to analyze the AHP proposal. Based on city staff's preliminary analysis, the proposal was deemed worthy of further discussion to determine whether the parties could reach agreement on terms for a binding comprehensive agreement. By Council Resolution R 19-04, adopted on February 26, 2019, City Council authorized execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city and AHP outlining general concepts for the potential project. For the last several months, city staff has met on a regular basis with AHP and consultants. On Monday, August 26, 2019, City Council presented site layout recommendations and conceptual designs. City staff presented site layout recommendations and conceptual designs for City Council consideration. On Monday, September 9, 2019, City Council held a public hearing to receive public comment on the AHP proposal, the site layout recommendations, and the conceptual designs discussion. The next step in the negotiation process is to prepare more detailed plans and specifications so that a reasonably accurate cost estimate can be obtained for each potential element of the project. Obtaining accurate cost estimates will allow for analysis of the financial feasibility of the project. It is estimated that the cost to obtain more detailed plans and specifications will be, and this covers the $475,000, $200,000 for the new city hall and parking garage, and $275,000 for the new police and fire public safety building. AHP has agreed to incur this expense on the condition that the city agrees to reimburse AHP its actual third-party design costs not to exceed $475,000 in the event that the city elects not to proceed with the project. The city and AHP will execute a reimbursement agreement memorializing these terms. In the event the city elects not to proceed with the project and reimburses AHP, all plans and specifications that have been prepared will become the property of the city. The city has debt service fund balance available to fund the contingent reimbursement. The funds are available because of savings from lower interest expenses than anticipated. The ordinance proposed for City Council consideration transfers a portion of the savings to a new capital improvement fund project labeled the City Hall Relocation Project. Financial impact, none at this time. In the event the city elects not to proceed with the proposed project, it will reimburse AHP Development LLC its actual third-party design costs in the amount not to exceed the $475,000, and ownership of all plan specifications will be transferred to the city of Portsmouth. Next steps following council action, if the action is taken, the city and AHP Development LLC will execute a reimbursement agreement, and AHP will proceed with the preparation of more deep, detailed plans and specifications for consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chair recognizes Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, for that information, and thank you, Mayor. One of the main concerns I have with what you just read, if we're talking about a developer such as Amada Hoffler, and we're talking about their capabilities and what they can do and what they're capable of, the risk, the risk reward for me, as a business person, if they're that much interested in our property and developing it, and under the memorandum of agreement, if this thing goes through, we will be conveying property to them. Conveying property, meaning we will be giving the developer property. I'm sorry, I can't see where we need to set up a fund and put $475,000 in to reimburse them for expenses. It's just, I mean, if they want the deal done bad enough, they need to put up the $475,000, and then we deal with it on the back end. That's the risk versus reward. And I think that unless we're required, which I didn't hear that that's an absolute requirement to set up this fund, I don't think we need to be putting any money in an escrow or in an account to reimburse them at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Battle.
There was a guy, and he was a poker player. And every time Friday night he went to the game, he lost his money. So we're kind of like that guy. Because we're overmatched. This company has 100 of the best lawyers in the country. Harvard, Yale, all of the top-notch schools. They were not our, if you go to that game, you're going to lose. They're not in the game to lose. And we don't, we're not prudent and cautious, and we don't have the proper hands on the heartbeat of this deal to, you know, deal with it, period. We have so many things in the city to do, so many things to pick up, so much that positive. And adding on such a venture like that right now just does not make any sense.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, did you want to speak? You may. Please state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Pat Burns. I live in Brighton. I came here tonight with all sorts of negative feelings. And therefore, moment, listened to all these comments, I said, good, we have a lot of people in the city who are thinking right. And then to hear you at the end say, you're not going to listen to anything we said because you're going to vote tomorrow on it. It doesn't make sense to me. I know it might not be the smartest thing in the world, but that doesn't mean I'm stupid. And we all came out here tonight because we love our city. We want the best for our city. We don't need to be sold down the boat, up the river again. We have had it several times. I've been in this city many, many years and seen us being thrown away too many times. You have a lot of people who said some good stuff. You need to listen to what the people says. You don't need to vote tomorrow. You shouldn't have had us here tonight. You had us come tonight, and you're going to listen, but if you're voting tomorrow, that means you're not listening to anything. Please do for the city what you would like for people to do for you and your children and grandchildren. Don't sell us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Ruben Washington, 5 Columbia Court, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm a bit confused too because you invited us to talk about location, but I don't feel like I got an invitation to talk about the process of getting here. I think we're, we have taken, the council has taken a step to enter into the memorandum of understanding with a $475,000 not-to-exceed limit to a process that we, the citizens, have not had an opportunity to participate in. And if we have an opportunity to participate in the process down the road, then we have to pay to participate with our tax dollars not to exceed $475,000 to start with. So I'm kind of confused because, of course, the designs are quite attractive, aesthetically pleasing to the eye, and certainly would enhance the beauty of our great city. But what needs to happen for us is we need to be able to first participate in the conversation about how we get there, and if we want to go there, and minimally, we need more than one bidder or designer to sit at the table to talk about what they will do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak? Please state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is William Connolly, and I live in Water Street, right here on the waterfront. First of all, I must apologize to the city and the council for appearing like this. I don't like to come before council unless I'm properly dressed, with a shirt and tie, but it's just the way I am. But anyways, I live on the waterfront, and what you're doing, and I've been to all the meetings that we've had over the years and all the promises of rebuilding the downtown area, you are piecemealing off what you have told us before. And one of the meetings recently that I had was with the city engineer Wright, give us a parking lot downtown here, you're going to turn it into a big water holding facility. I haven't heard none of that. I know that you're piecemealing. It makes me very, very afraid because of the piecemealing that we did on the old site, on the old Holiday Inn site. Up there, it's still sitting vacant. Now, if you tear down these two buildings, am I going to be looking at a vacant lot? You haven't presented nothing that you're going to put back in there. And that's a concern to us, living on the waterfront. That's our lifetime investment. I live here, and every time you turn around, I'm chasing my tail. Another, another meeting, another, well, anyways, I just slopped off a word. But I want to thank you for the time, and once again, I apologize for not being properly dressed. I wish you reconsider giving us a little more information on what your whole downtown plan is. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak? Anybody else? All right, the Chair recognizes, we'll close the public hearing. This is your last invitation. If you want to speak, please come to the lectern. We have two speakers. Whoever gets there first, please come up. You'll have five minutes. State your name and your address.
Good evenings, council. My name is John Lawson. I reside at 202 Charles Avenue, Portsmouth, Virginia. And I don't know a whole lot about this deal, but I do know that waterfront property is very valuable, and I know that non-refundable deposits are very valuable. When you start talking about $475,000 of taxpayer money being non-refundable, I have to think about that, and you should too. When you start thinking about giving away waterfront property, you need to think about that. That's valuable property. It belongs to this city, the people of the city. I want to thank you all for all your hard work. I'm not up here to bash you, but I want you to know, we are concerned about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to speak? Please state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Garland Alexander, 229, 2913 Tanmark Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia. I want to speak about something was said by Mr. Battle. He mentioned stifens.
Sir, we're not here to talk about stifens.
I understand that, Mayor.
Only on this project.
I'm on the project, okay? And I want to speak about what the manager said about the savings that we're going to get this $475,000 from. It was on refinancing of bonds, what I understood to say. Now, I know there was 8.1 million dollars saved in refinancing bonds on the pension systems. And my comment on this is, representing the retirees, police and fire, and other retirees in Portsmouth, we can't afford $600,000. Matter of fact, in this, when they did the refinance of the bonds, they did the refinance and the bonding that the manager spoke about, there was wording in there that couldn't be used for benefits. Is this the same $470,000, the same refinancing that the manager's talking about to get the $475,000 out of, but yet we can't find $600,000 to give the widows that are making $10,000, some of them, but we're going to find $475,000, but we can't find $600,000 to give a $600 one-time stifling, which they didn't receive a raise this year at all, retirees? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on the project, on the concept? I'm being very, very generous with our time. Okay, now we are closed, and we have two people on council that would like to speak. The first is, I'll take them in the order that they held up their hand. Councilman Battle.
Remember that that $475,000 is for that one item.
Paul, turn your microphone.
The $475,000 is for that one item. That don't count the time and the meanings that they put into this issue, that they are probably going to ask for, because with that memorandum of understanding, we are obligated to reimburse that as well as we back out. So it's bad. We don't need to do it, and I've done my best for you. Thank you.
The Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Again, once again, thank you for the additional speakers who have come forth, and I think that with Dr. Patton reading the resolution that's going to go forth tomorrow, so, you know, of course, our understanding that we're going to take $475,000 from one set apart, put it in a funding that will be set aside for this process, and that is our understanding. But being that we've heard so many speakers who are against this, and we are your voice for effective government, I would urge my council members for us to stall this vote or delay the vote at a later time. They do feel like we are rushing this decision, and that would be my hope for this council for tomorrow on this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments, anybody on council? None. Well, we're adjourned. We'll convene tomorrow at 5 o'clock for our work session and 7 o'clock for a regular. This meeting is adjourned?
Yes.